Good morning. I call to order the January 2, 2019, order of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Ridgerson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, items that are not on today's general agenda, excuse me, and they're usually limited to three minutes. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's public forum agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
RFA 101-19, Rural Fire District Number One, Gypsum Property Edition with David Nielsen, Rural Fire District Number One, Secretary/Treasurer.
All right. Good morning, David.
Celine County Rural Fire District Number One requests the commission's approval to purchase an adjoining piece of property next to our existing lots in Gypsum for a price of $11,700, county appraised value, plus closing costs. The reason for this purchase is to clear up an existing area, eliminating a previously unknown utilities easement through our existing property. The purchase will allow for better placement and configuration of the proposed new fire station and also mitigate existing and future impediments to the district's plans for the new building. The funds for this purchase will be withdrawn from the district's general fund and special equipment account.
This is an additional $11,700 to what we've already approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
How long ago was that?
It was a little over a year ago.
These are the kind of things that frustrate me when we're getting requested for more money, and it has nothing to do with you personally or your Fire Department, but when we pay money for title insurance, things like that, and then we get surprised with an easement that's involved in that, it just frustrates me to know how that can happen and why do we have to pay for the title insurance if we're not going to get reimbursed here, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
And we're actually not going to buy any additional properties. Is that correct?
No, we will be buying.
We will be buying additional property, but it includes the easement.
Correct.
Is the purpose of it.
Yes.
I'll let the others talk.
Is it your plan to demolish the existing building, then?
Yes, it is.
You know what the cost of that is going to be?
Based off what we spent on the previous demolition, we're probably going to look at somewhere around $1,000 to $1,500 for demolition and disposal.
And will this station have drive-through capabilities? Will you have alley access in?
Yes.
So we are actually, I guess my recommendation would be tongue-in-cheek, I might add, to go ahead and burn it down and use it for training.
Wish we could.
Okay. Other questions? Public comment?
And your board has approved.
Yes, they have.
This purchase.
Yes.
And it's my assumption that this does not come from the, this $11,700 does not come from the county general fund. That's correct. Andrew, Rita?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I just want, looking at it and looking at the site and looking at your building process, I think even looking at this proposal will save the money in the long run of making it a square building and not an L-shaped building.
Correct.
So I think your cost savings there is going to pretty much override what you're going to spend here. So I would be, you know, it's just completely a no-brainer type of thing here, but sorry that it had to happen here with the title insurance, but it did and here we are. So, yep.
All right. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of the adjoining piece of property next to the existing lots in Gypsum, Kansas, as requested by RFD Number One Fire Board.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 101-19 for the purchase of property, the RFD Number One for Gypsum Property Edition. Are there further comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item number three.
Policy 20.18, Performance Grievance Disciplinary Action and Termination Appeals with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a number of policies here. The first policy, 20.18, the Performance Grievance Disciplinary Action and Termination Appeal Policy, did have a request from the Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit to include an FOP, Fraternal Order of Police, member officer that the employee could have present during that appeal process if the employee chooses to do so. This was already allowed with our other bargaining unit, SCAPE, so it does just make it consistent with SCAPE, allowing that other officer in there for that other bargaining unit.
So this is not an additional person, it's just a person who perhaps could be there instead of.
At the employee's choice.
Either SCAPE or Fraternal Order of Police member.
Right.
Either or.
Right, right.
Questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the changes to policy number 20.18 as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the changes to policy 20.18 as recommended by staff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Policy 30.03, Employee Performance Appraisal with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Okay, Marilyn.
Okay. For this particular policy, we have certain positions within the county and specifically the Sheriff's Office that have a one-year probationary period versus six months for most other positions. For those one-year probationary periods, there was an evaluation done at 90 days, six months, nine months, and a year. For six-month probationary positions, they have it just at three months and six months, so at the halfway point and at the completion. And so again, it's one of those things we wanted to make consistent with those one, those positions that do have a one-year probationary period. We'll do one at the halfway point, which is six months, and one at the one-year point or at the completion of the probation. This is something that the Sheriff's Office does support on this. They just found that they were spending an awful lot of time doing the paperwork. It does, it still allows the supervisor to visit with that employee if there's any concerns about performance, but it just kind of shortens the requirements on that.
Questions of Marilyn? Not, I'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the changes to policy number 30.03 as recommended by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the changes to policy 30.03 as recommended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five.
Policy 30.27, Correction Officer Retention Incentive Program with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Busy girl today, Marilyn.
Yes. This is a brand-new policy that was created, actually modeled after another county's policy. We were finding that we were having a hard time filling and keeping corrections officers in the jail over there. So this is something as an effort to attract and retain some corrections officers. It provides a hiring incentive of a total of $1,500, so one-third of that would be payable at six months of employment, and then two-thirds of it would be payable at one year. The employee does need to stay for two years to keep that, otherwise they do pay that back. The policy also allows for commissioners to review the effectiveness of the program and find that it's not effective or if there's any budgetary reason, that policy can be rescinded.
It seems that this seems to be industry-wide that we get into these types of things, to have to, you know, buy our way into employees, but so be it. Any rate, it looks like a good policy to me. So are there questions from other Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the policy number 30.27 as recommended by staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve policy 30.27 for a correction officer retention incentive program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six.
Policy 40.15, Expensive Travel for Community or County Business, Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
Once again, Marilyn.
This is an annual policy that we do update each year. We do follow the IRS standard mileage rate. The IRS did update the mileage rate for 2019. It is going up from 54.5 cents per mile to 58 cents per mile. That also triggers a change in the appraiser's hard driving allowance, which they get 81.75 percent, and that is, that would go up to 87 cents per hard driving allowance.
Questions of Marilyn? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the changes to policy number 40.15 as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve policy changes for policy 40-1, or .15, travel expense for county business. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item number seven.
Policy 40.40, Mobile Device Acquisition with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
This is just in housekeeping correction, corrected a typographical error on one page, and then it also updates the effective date on the subsequent pages. We had it changed on the front page, but not the subsequent pages, so a little bit of housekeeping on that one.
Okay. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the changes to policy number 40.40 as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve policy number 40.40, mobile device acquisition change. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight.
Policy 40.48, Mobile Device Acceptable Use Policy with Marilyn Lemar, Human Resources Director.
One more time.
Yep, last time. For this policy is the same as the last one. It does correct a typographical error and the effective date on the subsequent pages of the policy, so housekeeping.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the changes to policy number 40.48 as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve policy changes for number 40.48, mobile device acceptable use policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Oh, for government and the things that we have to get approved in the public. All right. Item number nine.
Roden Bridge Update with Darren Fishel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Morning, Darren.
Morning, Commissioners. Sorry to do our update. You know, for the administrative portion, we've been working on getting bid documents prepared for 2019, closing out the 2018 books and preparing for spring projects. And just to inform you a little bit about what those might be that we have planned, this is Shipton Road from Ohio Street to Old 81. It was overlaid, and we plan on getting out there this spring and correcting that drop-off from the asphalt. Then we're going to uplay, upgrade Link Road to gravel, that's 6,000 feet going north of Watkins. And then we have an earth edge wedge on Brookville Road going north of Interstate 70. Brookville Road is challenging. It's very narrow, doesn't have any protection if you drop a wheel off. So we have dirt up at Eagle's Knob that we're going to put a little edge wedge on there. Hopefully, over time, we will be able to get some AB3 and aggregate on it. And we've got a Lego block entrance to build. This is out on Cloud Street. Somebody went, ran off in the ditch and hit that. There is a accident report for it, so hopefully we can get reimbursed for that. They did tear up and bend the stringers. And then we do have, we're planning on an earth edge wedge on Don Meyer Road from the River Bridge to Old 40, where they did the overlay last year. We would like to AB3 edge wedge 12 miles of State Street from K-140 to Brookville Road. And then also that six miles going north of Halsted Road off of State Street. And then Burma Road between K-140 and and State Street really kind of got beat up last year. It's flattened and leveled, and it needs reshaped and rebuilt. We have a ditch cleaning and repair project on Simpson Road south of I-70. And then we're going to try and rebuild some portions of Homes Road between Country Club and Magnolia Road. That's a pretty long list of things for us to do, and weather will play a big part in that. So we're just kind of setting these by priorities, and then if there's anything else or anything else that comes up, we can kind of shift them around. Our maintenance forces, we set up some voting booths for the elections in November, and then we just repaired, repaired some culverts. This was on Don Meyer Road south of Rose Hill. This is where engineering goes out and looks at box culverts to see if they need to be replaced and run a drainage area. And then for whatever reason, it was a box at one time, but a culvert will suffice in the replacement, and does save a lot of money, not having to pour concrete. And then we repair culverts also when there's a little hole in the top of them, but the culvert's good. We go out and just repair them. It's just a little ditch cleaning project that we did. And then we, the Commissioners approved the purchase of a cutter head this year. So we've been out this year, this is on State Street where the, no, this is on Headville Road. The trees are just out encroaching the road. And we went in there, and it looks raggedy and ugly. I will admit that, but once that grows back in the spring, it won't be a problem. This is a place on State Street. And the work that these crews did, it took them about, oh, maybe two days to do that, and usually that, those two jobs would have been about a week project. We are continuing to haul aggregates. We hauled 16,507 tons of rock. We are hauling it in as fast as they can bring it, 3,690 tons of AB3 and 3,930 tons of sand. That's really going to, if there's any question.
Sounds good. Sounds like we've got a lot on the plate for 2019, ambitious plans and so forth. And obviously, as you know, particularly in weather like this, roads is our number-one complaint, if you will, from the rural areas and number-one priority as far as we're concerned. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of money and a lot of, you know, getting things put together to make it work, so. Other comments or questions from Commissioners for Roden Bridge? Not? Thank you for the report. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of today's agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? I do have one announcement to make. It is both with sadness and joy at the same time that we have received the announcement from our county administrator, Rita Deister, that after 29 years of service for Celine County, that she intends to retire at the end, at the, towards the end of March. So we want to thank Rita. We'll do much more, more so on that regard later on, but thank you for your years of service. You've done a wonderful job, and I know how hard you work and how hard you have worked and continue to work. And I know that you'll be here till 6 o'clock or later on the day that you retire, so thank you, Rita, for your years of service. And which would bring us to another point then. What are we going to do to replace her? We have taken that step, and we are going to promote Andrew Manley to the position of county administrator effective with the retirement date that Rita has announced. So thank both of you, Rita for your years of service, and Andrew, we look forward for big things from you in the future and your tenure when you become the administrator, so. That having been said, I will take a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. We will have a study session, further study session on the rodeo. We will have a, a study session, further study session on the radio, uh, rodeo.